I'm Linda Lloyd and I'm the Presiding Officer, assigned by the Board to conduct this portion of the Category 1 License Renewal Hearing for PID LLC Doing Business as Prescott Downs and Casino. Before we begin, if we could all please turn off or at least to vibrate our cellphones and other electronic devices so we don't interrupt our speakers. I would like to remind everyone that this proceeding is being recorded today by a court reporter who's sitting down to my right and is also being recorded on video and livestreamed to the Board's website at this time. If you would like to watch this again in the future, it will be posted to our website as well. As the Presiding Officer, I call this hearing to order. The date is Wednesday, September 25th. The time is 10:32 and the location is the Summit Township Building at 1230 Town Hall Road in Erie, Pennsylvania. The Racehorse Development and Gaming Act, as amended, requires at Section 1326 that an operator's license shall be subject to renewal by the Board every five years. This license renewal hearing is convened by the Board pursuant to the mandate found in Section 1205B of the Gaming Act that requires as part of the renewal process, a public hearing to be held in a municipality where the licensed facility is located. This public hearing was advertised on the Board's website, announced by the Board at public Board meetings and advertised in local newspapers. Board members present today for the hearing are to my immediate right, our Chair Denise Smiler, and to my left, Commissioner Frank Dermody and Commissioner Fran Regan. Hearing will begin with a presentation by PID and after that presentation, the Board's Office of Enforcement Counsel and the Board will have an opportunity to ask questions of PID's witnesses. After the conclusion of that presentation, the Office of Enforcement Counsel will make its presentation and again counsel for PID and our Board members will have opportunity to ask questions of those witnesses. After the close of the testimony and evidence from both parties, those witnesses who have registered to speak today at today's public input hearing will have their name called and will have approximately five minutes each to provide their thoughts regarding the renewal. Following the close of public comment, PID and OEC will each have the opportunity to provide a short closing statement. So let's begin by having all witnesses from Prescott Downs and Office of Enforcement Counsel who will testify here today to stand and raise your right hand and be sworn by our court reporter.
And PID, take it away. And if you can state and spell your name the first time you speak for our court reporter, he does have some spellings, but not all of them.
Director Lloyd, Chair Smiler, Commissioner Regan, Commissioner Dermody, good morning and welcome to Erie County. My name is Kevin Hayes, that's K.E.V.I.N.H.A.Y.E.S. of the Saber Law Firm in Scranton, and I have the privilege of representing Category 1 Slot Machine licensee PID LLC Doing Business as Prescott Downs and Casino. As Director Lloyd indicated, Prescott Downs will offer a presentation this morning as part of the public input proceeding. Here are the topics that we will discuss during our case in chief. First, we are going to provide you with an overview of the property's licensing history as a racetrack casino, as well as a description of its current operations under the ownership of Churchill Downs Incorporated. We will describe the capital investment that Churchill Downs has made in this property since acquiring it in 2019. Next, the management team of Prescott Downs is going to describe the initiatives and strategies that it has implemented to develop a diverse workforce and to create opportunity for women and minority-owned business enterprises to transact business with Prescott Downs. We will also describe the benefits that are offered to Prescott Downs employees and the successes that the property has enjoyed in retaining its employees in what you will hear is a challenging labor market. Today, we will also describe Prescott Downs' efforts to address responsible gaming and alcohol management at the property, as well as the measures that have been taken to prevent minors from accessing the licensed facility and to prevent unattended minors. We will provide a summary of the economic impact and the tax revenues generated by this property to the benefit of the Commonwealth, Erie County, Summit Township, and the horse racing industry. We will provide you with a description of how Prescott Downs has honored its commitment to Pennsylvania's horse racing industry. And lastly, we will describe Prescott Downs' community outreach initiatives and the meaningful impact that this property has had on several nonprofit organizations in the area. We have a number of representatives from Prescott Downs, Churchill Downs, and Churchill Downs here today to offer testimony and answer your questions. At this time, I'm going to introduce someone who you are very familiar with, Prescott Downs' Vice President and General Manager Gary Hendricks, who will introduce the members of his team and then begin today's presentation. Gary?
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Chair Smiler, Director Linda, Director Lloyd, I'm sorry. And Commissioners, thank you for joining us today and the staff. Appreciate you coming to our little corner of the Commonwealth today. Hope you enjoyed your visit yesterday. It's exciting to see the race and all that. My name is Gary Hendricks, G.A.R.Y.H.E.N.D.R.I.C.K.S. And we have a fairly large contingent of employees here that I kind of wanted to share with you. Jill Snyder, who just sat down beside me, is our Director of Human Resources. You'll hear from her. We also have, in the back behind me, we have Michael Mayer, who is our Executive Vice President, Churchill Downs, excuse me. Sitting beside him is Oscar Reeve, one of our counsel. Beside, on the other side, Lou Frisconia, another counsel from corporate office. In the back of the room, we also have Matt Ennis, who is my Senior Director of Operations, who is a longtime employee. A lot of these people that are here today are actually day-one employees. Jennifer C., my Director of Marketing. Jake Rack, my Director of Finance. Ross Dahlquist, who is our Controller. Terry Schneider, in the back there, is our Director of Compliance. Beside her is Nicole Ford, our Internal Auditor. And then we have Bill Syrick, our Director of Facilities, and Clark Mester, our Director of Security. So all kind of here to observe today. Welcome their presence. So move forward here. So this represents a timeline of events here in Erie through 2019 when Churchill assumed ownership of the casino. It's presented against a backdrop that makes one of the most beautiful pictures of the property with the view of the lake in the background. Kind of, it's a shame that it's grayed out, but it is one of the really, it's just a grandiose property. It's a beautiful area. We're showing some key moments in our history, including our grand opening in 2007 and Churchill coming in January of 2019. I myself joined the property a few years later in September of '22, after having served as GM in Nima Colon. Been a GM now in Pennsylvania since 2016. Later in the presentation, we'll share some events that have taken place since Churchill came in. So here we have some photos of the property showing the diversity of the gaming operation here. We have 1,525 slot machines, 34 table games, 15 hybrid seats, which make up three of those games. We have our sportsbook area, our one-mile Topeka Surface Rave Track that we all saw yesterday. And as I was mentioning yesterday, it's recognized as one of the safest tracks in the country with that synthetic surface. And I'll have quite a bit more to speak about racing a little bit later on. So dining at Prescott, we have a variety of restaurants for our patrons to enjoy. This includes Bourbon &amp; Brew Casual Dining Restaurant, Le Bon Vie, or Higher Steakhouse, which has been recognized locally by Yelp and OpenTable as a premium dining service here in the town. And we recently opened Inca Cafe, which is a grab-and-go concept, pizza and those kind of things for patrons to give them another option. So quite a few options to choose from. And then the lower right corner is the Center Bar, which is a fabulous place to sit in. There's a lot of game tops around there for video poker, but it's just a great place to sit and enjoy the environment. So Churchill Downs, everybody's familiar with the race, operates 27 properties across 14 states. This includes six thoroughbred tracks, of which Prescott is one, three harness tracks, and one training track. The Kentucky Derby is the longest-running sport event in North America. Earlier this year, ran their 150th race. One of the most exciting finishes that I've ever seen. If you had a chance to see the race, it was a photo finish that was just incredible. Since Churchill came in in 2019, we've had $17 million nearly spent in capital, investment in the property. As I was pointing out yesterday, some of the newest projects, we just laid down new carpeting last year in November. Just before that, we had replaced all of our slot chairs, which a day that you have 1,500 chairs moving in and out of the casino is always an exciting day. We are currently bringing in, within the next two or three days, we have some slot machines coming in. We have 60 machines coming in this fall, another couple million dollars. It's not included in that 17. And we also, we also opened that food outlet to give our patrons the other option with the, with the Inca Cafe. Going on to talk about diversity, we have a commitment to diversity within our purchasing and our employment practices. I'm going to speak a little bit to the purchasing side. We recently partnered with a company named Supplier.io. They're a company that specializes in identifying minority and women-owned businesses. What we found is that just relying on businesses to self-report wasn't necessarily reliable. So we brought this group in as a company. They started with us in quarter one. And while you can see that we've had a few efforts in that lower right table to kind of get a little bit better spend, having them start in quarter one, the quarter-two results of 2004 nearly doubled the prior year at 6.8%. And it's a trend that we're continuing to grow with this group. It's a really exciting event to be, or an opportunity here for us to expand that. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jill to talk about employment.
Good morning, Chair Smiler, Director, Commissioners, and Staff. My name is Jill Snyder, J.I.L.L.S.N.Y.D.E.R. We consider diversity to be a crucial part of our success and our commitment can not only be found in our plan, but in our workforce. We are committed to attracting qualified diverse candidates by sharing all external postings with our diversity contacts. These contacts include, but are not limited, to our Veterans Administration, Mission Empower, the JFK and Booker T. Washington Centers, Career Link, our local schools, to include high school, college, and technical schools, et cetera. We evaluate applicants using job-related requirements and prohibit discrimination. All management participates in diversity training with this year scheduled for November. This training will help management recognize that we all have biases and how those biases can influence decisions and interactions with others. Our intent is to pursue inclusion of all people, which strengthens PID in our pursuit for excellence. 34.6% of our employees are women, with this trend continuing through our executive team. The majority of us on the executive team are not only day-one employees, but have been promoted from within. In order to maintain a diverse pool of applicants, we rely not only on our partnership efforts with our contacts, but our community outreach as well. This includes attendance at local job fairs, job boards, and providing interviewing practice and feedback at local schools. Internally, we work with our team members to align their schedules, to fit the bus route, and offer a referral program. With the help of these efforts, our total ethnic minority percentage exceeds Erie County's by four points. While we are committed to finding qualified diverse applicants, we are also committed to our current diverse workforce. It is our mission that all our team members feel valued and respected. Earlier this year, we conducted an engagement survey requesting feedback from all team members. We use that information to create action plans for improvement. We are currently conducting a poll survey to evaluate how effective those action plans are through the eyes of our team members. We have spent over $100 million in payroll, taxes, and benefits since 2019, when we joined the Churchill family. With 93% of our employees being PEA residents, that money is reinvested into our local economy. We have a rich, comprehensive benefit package. Our Employee Stock Purchase Plan is a unique benefit, allowing all team members, including frontline, to become equity owners in our company. This is a benefit full-time and part-time team members can partake in, as long as they've been employed for 30 days and work at least 21 hours per week. We offer a 401K plan where you are 100% vested in the company match on day one. This match is 100%, up to 3%, and half of the fourth and fifth percent. We offer free life insurance and short-term disability. We have an employee assistance program that is not only a resource for both full-time and part-time team members, but their family members as well. Next week, we are hosting a health fair with local vendors offering flu shots, mental health awareness, financial wellbeing, and an opportunity for our team members to donate blood. We celebrate our team members often. Our Director of Food and Beverage partnered with one of our Nepali team members to prepare goat curry for us all to enjoy. It was so successful that we have plans to do something similar again first quarter 2025. Hiring an inclusive, diverse workforce and making sure our workforce is valued and treated with respect is something we pride ourselves on.
Eric?
So while we're committed to diversity in our employees, we're also committed to our compulsive gaming and responsible alcohol service. Employees are trained at new hire orientation and have annual CCGP training refresher for all employees, as well as events to raise awareness, which I have a couple of examples in the next slide, for items like, or events such as Responsible Gaming Education Month, which is actually currently ongoing. RAMPs is the approved program from the PLCB is utilized for service training. In addition to RAMPs training occurring for all service employees, beverage service, we also train all gaming management, table games and slots, and all security staff, super operators or security officers and above, within six months of hire. Employees are required to recertify this every two years. So the following slide is just an example of some, some things that we pass out that this is actually done by Terry on the property, a word search and a questionnaire that employees are asked to take part in during this Responsible Gaming Month. Another key component of Responsible Gaming, of course, is our minor prevention and underage unattended minors. And you can see several examples of what we've done at the property. It's a circular program where the key component of this is see something, say something, right? We have signage all through the building, both on the exterior with the, it's illegal to leave children unattended sign with the girl, and I believe that was actually picked up by the Board as part of the, the drive that you guys did as well. Something very similar. We have rack cards inside the casino that have this. And as you heard yesterday, we have a recurring message every two hours. We play, and a former employee speaks to everybody, reminding them that it's illegal to leave children in the casino. We have had a few incidents at the property, but it's been, it's been significantly less since we put all these initiatives into, into place, sorry. And the incidents that we do have are resolved mostly within just a few minutes, as I'm sure you'll hear from Mr. Rossman. So the economic impact, since the property opened, nearly $1.5 billion in tax revenue has been generated to support property tax relief in the local community and the horse racing. Since Churchill Downs has taken ownership, that's $335 million. So this is a quick snapshot of the competitive landscape. It's a little unique in this part of the state in that we face pressure from not only within the state with the other casinos, but also from Ohio and New York, which has been a challenge. Ohio went live with sports betting earlier in January of '23 and had a major impact on us. It's one of the impacts I'll show you in just a minute. The smaller map shows about a five-mile radius around the property, and we've identified upwards of 150 skill games in that area. To put that in context, I shared this with a few people yesterday, but we've seen estimates of upwards of 100,000 skill games across the Commonwealth. If you think about the casino floor being around 1,500 games, that represents an additional 67 casinos across the Commonwealth, in addition to the regulated casinos. So they definitely do have an impact on us. Share a few pictures with you, and the one I really want to call out is the upper one, Lake Erie Games 777. And notice their, their Facebook, or snapshot that we took, the biggest gaming floor in Erie with 30 of the hottest and most popular skill games. These are no longer just a few places in the back of a restaurant or a bar. They're, and the one below, Meal Plumbing, has been turned into a parlor as well. These are actually small-scale casinos that are coming in. So what we have here is revenue trend essentially since Churchill came in, but showing some of the key things that have happened during that time. 2018, PA operators began to accept retail sports wagers. In 2019, in July, we began accepting retail sports. In December, we began to do online sports wagers, and in 2020, we began to accept interactive wagers. In 2022, New York operators began to accept retail and online sports. In '23, as I just said, Ohio began to accept theirs. In '23, we began to see really expansive growth of the skill-based games. In '24, that has continued. You can see the, the revenue trend is slightly down. And of course, 2020 is a bit of an outlier because of the COVID shutdowns. So this is a, next page is a page that we've shared with several legislators showing the effective tax rate. What this is, is over the course of the years, we've seen our revenue trend down. This is slot revenue. It's driven by the $10 million flat LSA fee, which is paid in full during that COVID shutdown, by the way. We've removed COVID 2020 from this slide as it significantly skews the data. But what this represents is slot gaming taxes, including the admin fee and the LSA, divided into our slot revenue. This is before any other expenses, including payroll tax, sales and use tax, property tax, racing, those kind of things. This would actually drive that number up fairly significantly. So to go on to racing, since Churchill ownership, nearly $69 million in purses have been paid out over the course of 377 racing days. In our '24 meet, which ends later in October, we expect to have 76 days of live racing. Our 16th Master Steak Race was just held last Friday with a purse of $300,000. We actually have four steaks during that. The Masters is $300,000, the Mile $100,000, and then two smaller races in front of that. But this was a record day for us. It's the first time we've done it on a Friday, and we drove nearly $2.7 million in handle. The prior record was 1.9 million. So it was, it was a huge day, very, very successful. For the first time, we also partnered with Parks Casino to tie into their Pennsylvania Derby, which happened on Saturday. We offered a pick-four and a daily double against their, two of their races and two of our races, which performed very well here. This was a first for Pennsylvania racing, for Pennsylvania racing, sorry. And the response that this initiative received from the Racing Commission was overwhelming. They were thrilled to see us doing something like that. So just to try to breathe some new life into that product. And we continually look at opportunities to change post times, those kind of things to get the public more involved. We're actually looking at some changes for next year, which we have to get in front of that commission with, but always looking for things. So our community outreach, this represents cash dispersment, doesn't include volunteer efforts, employees that volunteer for fire departments, those kind of things. There's a lot of that. We also have a lot of in-kind donations that we do, where we'll give Dinner for Two in LBV or Dinner for Two at Bourbon &amp; Brew. This just represents cash, some of the people that we've worked with. Combined donations since Churchill came in is $1.1 million. The logos that I put on this page represent some of the more exciting groups that we work with. Erie Gives this year, it's a community giving day, raised $9.7 million. It's their record for that day as well. They were also recognized at that event for being number three in community charity days in the country. So they're very excited about that. What this does is they represent a group that then takes the money that, that we donate to them and gives that out, distributes it to 500 other charities. So it allows us to reach many more people than we could ever manage to do on our own. I actually gave a, a speech for them at their, at the UPMC Ballpark last week, thanking them and for their efforts. We've been working with them for multiple, for over 13 years, doing that program. Warriors to Washington is another organization with which we work. Every year, they take a group of veterans to tour DC, and you'll be hearing from one of their members here a little bit. We allow them to utilize our parking lot, which keeps their cars under surveillance while they take a bus to DC. One of my favorites is also is the Boys and Girls Club of Erie with their Kiss a Pig event. We'll switch over to some photos here. You can see the Kiss a Pig with, with me feeding a pig a carrot. So I've done that, managed to do that two years in a row. Next year will be Jake Rack. He just found out about that just now. But another, a couple of other groups that we've done there on the page, most notably the Veterans Miracle Center is another group that we support. We rotate every month a different, a different group through this program to raise money for. With that being said, that concludes our part of the presentation. Do we have any questions?
I will turn it over to David Tepper, our Office of Enforcement Counsel, for questions.
Turning to Slide 4. Oops. Okay. Are there any plans to change the size or footprint of the gaming floor?
Not at this point. We are looking, I think you've heard, we're looking with the legislature to potentially reduce the slot count. If we do that, we will be making some changes, but we have to have that legislation approved. And also to note, that would not entail any decrease in staffing. We'd simply be right-sizing the business to the current volumes. As, as you saw yesterday, there's large sections of the floor that don't get play. So we've already, the staffing is already set for that level of play. We would not expect any decrease in revenue with that.
You mentioned potential plans, if the legislature allowed, to reduce slot machines. Are there any plans to reduce table games or hybrid gaming spaces or to increase them?
No, not at this point.
Are there any plans to add banked table games such as poker?
No, not at this point.
Are there any plans to change the percentage or area of the gaming floor that permits smoking or?
No, not unless, unless a smoking ban does get issued. Obviously, we would react to that, but there's no plans for anything.
Are the 15 hybrid table game seats included in the total number of table games on the slide?
Yes, yeah. 31 actual table games, 15 seats accounts for three tables and hybrids, so 34 total.
And turning to Slide number five. Are there, are there any plans in the works for either renovations or new projects?
Not at this point. We always look for an opportunity. We recently opened the Inca Cafe, and while we continue to evaluate other options for the casino, we could expand into the old buffet with potentially a coffee shop or something. We're waiting to kind of see how the volume goes. It's difficult to term long-plan term capital strategy until we understand the state of the market, you know, specifically to skill-based games.
And turning to Slide number six. Are all of these properties both owned and operated by Churchill Downs Incorporated?
There are two that are joint ventures, Miami Gaming Valley and the Chicago Rivers Desplain are joint ventures. Chasers in New Hampshire is actually, the building is owned by another entity, but we operate all of those properties.
Thank you. And do all of these properties that operate a casino also operate horse harness racing?
No. Out of all these casinos, there are essentially nine with tracks, which I mentioned earlier, also one racing, training track. So 10 total tracks.
And turning to Slide number 10. What qualifies an employee to be eligible for benefits such as medical, dental, and vision insurance?
Regular, full-time.
How many hours a week is constituted for full-time?
30.
And how long must a full-time employee work to be eligible for benefits?
Benefits are first of the month following 30 days of employment, except for 401K, which is three months, and then the Employee Stock Purchase Plan.
And are there any benefits that the non-full-time employees are eligible for?
Yes. They can participate in our Employee Assistance Program, they can earn PTO, and also the Employee Stock Purchase.
And what percentage of promotions are internal?
We, our policy is to always look internally, and we estimate about 63% are internal. However, looking at our executive team, it's 88%.
And of those 63 and 88%, what's the breakdown between promoted from Prescott Downs versus other Churchill properties? Isle Downs versus other Churchill properties?
Um, I believe the percentage is three, but over the last five, 3%, but over the last five years, it was seven people that have come in from Churchill.
Thank you. And 93.3% of employees are Pennsylvania residents. Can you please provide a breakdown of what states the remaining employees are residents of?
Uh, predominantly, it's New York and Ohio, but during our racing season, we see employees come in from all over the US, to include Texas, Kentucky, Michigan.
And turning to slide 13. What measures are being taken to ensure that those 18 to 20 who are wagering on horse racing are not accessing the gaming floor?
So whenever we have live racing, there is the checkpoint there.
Um, and what measures does Prescott Isle Downs take to detect unattended minors and vehicles?
So you see that what we have here as far as signage goes out in the parking lot, we have a continual, if we're instance, somebody's operating, we have the message.
Thank you. The Office of Enforcement Counsel has no further questions.
And I will turn to board members if they have any questions. I'll start at the end with Commissioner Regan.
No questions. Thank you very much. It's very thorough.
No questions, no.
And how about our chair?
No questions.
I know you do.
Actually, my first question is not addressing anything that you just presented today. Yesterday, during the tour, I remember there were calendars at the escalators showing special events and a special burger of the month. How do you advertise those events outside of the casino so people know about them as opposed to the folks that are inside the casino already?
Right. Multiple, um, a lot of online presence, Facebook, Instagram. Also, of course, have direct mail. And some amount of television and radio advertising.
And the direct mail is that, that list is based on what, folks that have been at the casino?
Yeah, players that are signed up and not on the self-exclusion list, of course, opted in for that.
And the executive team, what's the percentage of females and minorities on the executive team?
Female is 40%. Thank you. Minorities, I don't have that number off the, um...
Get back to us on that, okay? And with regard to, I, I think you're doing a great job with your outreach for recruiting minorities and diverse employees, but did you ever think about expanding it from local schools to regional or statewide because there are folks that aren't in the local area that might want to come to Erie, believe it or not?
Um, one of the difficulties we have is that if, if you think of Erie as, as, right, outside of Erie is very, very rural, not very diverse at all. Getting down into Pittsburgh, it, it represents a challenge. We have gone outside that market, um, Buffalo. We go outside that market for people that we can bring in and, and move in, always willing to talk to people.
Well, I, I know Chaney University's president is interested in having more of his folks get involved in the gaming industry, so you may want to reach out to HBCUs or some others, just, just the thought.
And we do job fairs at some of the universities outside the community, like Edinburgh and that area.
Good, good. All right. Thank you. Nothing else.
Any additional information you want to provide, answer the chair's question, you can send that information to the board clerk email address, and we'll get it distributed to all board members. Mr. Hayes wants to, we got to do some housekeeping.
For certain items to be entered into the record?
Yes.
Okay. Um, as that concludes the presentation of Prescott Isle Downs Casino, at this time, I would request the PowerPoint presentation, which was referenced during today's hearing, to be entered into the record as PID1.
Office of Enforcement Counsel has no objections.
Um, in addition, Director Lloyd, I would ask that the following written statements of support be entered into the record. As PID2, correspondence dated September 9, 2024, from Pennsylvania State Representative Ryan A. Bizarro of the 3rd Legislative District. As PID3, correspondence dated September 17, 2024, from Pennsylvania State Senator Dan Loughlin of the 49th Senatorial District. As PID4, correspondence dated September 10, 2024, from the President of Warriors to Washington. As PID5, correspondence dated September 12, 2024, from Al Messina, Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club of Erie. As PID6, correspondence dated September 12, 2024, from Ginny Hagerty, Executive Director of the Mercy Center for Women. As PID7, correspondence dated September 20, 2024, from Todd Mollister, the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania Horsemen's Benevolent and Protective Association. And lastly, as PID8, correspondence dated September 24, 2024, from State Representative Rob Murzky of the 2nd Legislative District.
We have no objections.
So PID1 through 8 are admitted into the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we'll turn now to our Office of Enforcement Counsel in their presentation.
Good morning, Director Lloyd, Chair Smiler, members of the board. Once again, David Tepper on behalf of the Office of Enforcement Counsel. Prior to this hearing, the board and Prescott Isle Downs were provided with documents marked as OEC Exhibits 1 through 10, which relate to Prescott Isle Downs renewal application for its Category 1 Slot Machine License. OEC and Prescott Isle Downs entered into stipulations regarding the admissibility and authenticity of these exhibits, which include the Pennsylvania State Police Report with data obtained from the National Incident-Based Reporting System for 2019 to 2023. This addresses criminal incidents that occurred at Prescott Isle Downs since its time of last renewal. This report is marked as OEC Exhibit 1. A letter dated August 8, 2024, from the Pennsylvania State Police Bureau of Liquor Control Enforcement, indicating that one citation and a corresponding adjudication had been issued against Prescott Isle Downs since its license was reissued in 2019. These documents are marked as OEC Exhibit Number 2. On August 15, 2024, the Board's Office of Compulsive and Problem Gambling issued a memorandum regarding Prescott Isle Downs' compliance with its casino and iGaming compulsive and problem gambling plans. This memo is marked as OEC Exhibit Number 3. On August 12, 2024, the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue Bureau of Compliance provided a copy of Prescott Isle Downs' Statement of Account confirming that it is in good standing with the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue. This is marked as OEC Exhibit Number 4. On August 5, 2024, the Pennsylvania State Horse Vasing Commission issued a letter to the Office of Enforcement Counsel indicating that the licensee's racing license is in good standing with the commission. This letter is marked as OEC Exhibit Number 5. OEC Exhibits 6 through 10 are not before you, but remain accessible through a share link previously provided to Prescott Isle Downs and members of the board. Since their licensure, um, in 2019, OEC and the licensee entered into three board-approved consent agreements. Together, these are marked as OEC Exhibit Number 6. OEC and the licensee conducted six compliance conferences since the license was reissued in 2019. Altogether, these compliance conference memorandums are marked as OEC Exhibit Number 7. Since their license was reissued in 2019, OEC has issued the licensee 17 warning letters. Altogether, these warning letters and Prescott Isle Downs' responses are marked as OEC Exhibit Number 8. OEC has issued Prescott Isle Downs' One Demand Letter since their license was reissued in 2019. Prescott Isle Downs appropriately responded to this demand letter. This demand letter and the response are collectively marked as OEC Exhibit Number 9. And finally, OEC and Prescott Isle Downs entered into a stipulation of facts and admissions of evidence executed by the parties on September 17, 2024. This is included and marked as OEC Exhibit 10. And at this time, the Office of Enforcement Counsel respectfully requests that Exhibits 1 through 10 be entered into the record, with Exhibits 7, 8, and 9 being marked as confidential.
Mr. Hayes?
No objection.
Okay, so moved with 7, 8, and 9 remaining confidential.
Well, we have no formal PowerPoint presentation. The Office of Enforcement Counsel will call three witnesses today to testify about Prescott Isle Downs. These witnesses are from the Pennsylvania State Police Bureau of Gaming Enforcement, the Board's Bureau of Casino Compliance, and the Board's Bureau of Investigations and Enforcement. Our first witness is Corporal Brian Knarrr with the Pennsylvania State Police.
Can you please state your name, spell your last name?
Sure. My name's Corporal Brian Knarrr. It's spelled B-R-I-A-N-K-N-A-R-R.
And can you please introduce?
Uh, again, my name is Corporal Brian Knarrr. I'm with the Pennsylvania State Police, and my job title is Prescott Isle Downs Supervisor in the State Police Office of Gaming Enforcement.
And can you please describe your career with the Pennsylvania State Police?
Uh, I've been employed with the Pennsylvania State Police for 20 years. I've been in a corporal since December of 2018. I've been at Prescott Isle Downs now for about two and a half years. Before that, in 20 years, I've, a lot of 18 years was on the road, working the road. I, before being promoted to corporal, I served as a field training officer, working on the road, training the new cadets that come out of the academy. I served as a, I served as a temporary criminal investigator in, in that capacity, basically a detective, criminal investigator. I was on the tactical mounted unit as a field rider for two years. Some of the things I was involved with, well, one of the things I was involved with while as a member of the tactical mounted unit, participated in the security of the 2016 Democratic National Convention. I was involved in the 2014 Poconos Manhunt for Eric Freen, 10 years ago, actually. And I was also involved in the security with the 2015 Pope Francis Visit in Philadelphia.
And what are your current job duties?
As a corporal, I act as the supervisor, in a supervisory capacity for the troopers that are assigned at the casino. I conduct, just some of the things I do, I conduct yearly member performance evaluations for our troopers. I correct and approve the trooper's reports, investigative reports, and assignment reports. I'm also the custodial officer for our evidence room, and I maintain our fleet of cars that we use for, at the casino, and I also help and assist with any calls as needed.
And what is the role of the Pennsylvania State Police Bureau of Gaming?
Uh, our role is to conduct investigations pertaining to Title IV investigations, Pennsylvania criminal offenses, as well as property preservation. Additionally, we oversee operations pertaining to the security of transactional money in and out of the casino via transport when the money truck comes every, every other day.
And can you please provide the Pennsylvania State Police's jurisdiction of Prescott Isle Downs Casino?
Our jurisdiction has changed over the last six years because we're primarily covered by Pennsylvania State Police Erie Station located in Lawrence Park, which is just outside of Erie. Therefore, this change provided that all incidents that are, are reported to the Bureau of Gaming Enforcement Office for investigation, and if we need assistance, we can call on Penn, the State Police Erie Station for any major incidents, just like homicides, anything like that, God forbid.
And who's primarily jurisdiction of the department?
Uh, kind of as explained above, we do. We handle most minor crashes, and now, more importantly, we address all minors in vehicles on the property and handle those as reported.
Thank you. Are the Pennsylvania State Police Bureau of Gaming?
Our current working relationship with the Erie Station is great for any necessary need that we would have. We also try to provide assistance with them as necessary. It's a good working relationship because I can think of at least seven of our officers that have worked in Erie and know the people there and in everything. I myself work in PSP Erie, so it's, it's a very good working relationship.
And can you please describe the working relationship between the Pennsylvania State Police Bureau of Gaming, Prescott Isle Downs, and casino employees?
Through our command structure, we have a very good working relationship with all levels of the casino employees, which bodes well for investigations to determine clarity and assistance in identifying suspects and actors. We try to keep a presence on the floor. We, we take periodic walks throughout, inside and outside the property. We can't talk too much to the employees because they're busy, we're busy, but we just maintain that presence. We know that they feel comfortable with us, and it does bode for a good working rapport.
And can you please describe the working relationship between PGCB, OEC, and casino employees?
Um, our relationship with PGCB is great, especially since we're only separated by a door. The lines of communication, they're open both ways. As supervisors, we're able to talk about any and all issues with the members and officers. We communicate regularly for investigative results and related reporting. Very good rapport.
And you can go with how arrest statistics are reported by the Pennsylvania State Police?
Yes.
Can you please describe how these statistics are reported?
Um, we use NIBRs, which is, stands for National Incident-Based Reporting System. It's a national database utilized by the FBI, being reported through our RMS, which means Record Management Data System. The offenses are documented with any and all reporting being made through this RMS system. UCR, which stands for Uniform Crime Reporting, is the older system that was utilized by our department prior to RMS.
And can you describe that a little further?
Yeah. End-of-year Senate reports are prepared annually to obtain all arrests being made at our particular location.
And how frequently do these investigations? And what is the last date of these investigations at Prescott Isle Downs Casino?
December 31, 2023.
And is this information included in the court of evidence?
No.
Can the number of offenses be reduced if the case is made unfounded?
No, but it should be noted that in an unfounded case, we would not be making an arrest. We would conduct a thorough investigation and then only charge as warranted.
And I'm going to direct you what has been provided as OEC Exhibit 1. I believe you have the time. Can you identify this document?
Yes. Uh, these are just our arrest statistics from 2019 through 2023, each individual specific year.
And does the OEC Exhibit 1? Should the actual number of arrests be prosecuted? And would you include the investigation into Prescott Isle Downs?
Yes.
And what is the most common criminal offense by an OEC Exhibit 1?
Um, every year, defiant trespassing is the most common arrest made at our location. That does include management and self-excluded suspects.
And approximately how many thefts are reported on average each month?
This can range, depending on any given year, but generally around seven to 10 per month. Many of these thefts are gray area crimes, but could easily become chargeable offenses, the most common being under Pennsylvania Code 3920, or Title 18, 3924, which is theft of property lost, mislaid, or delivered by mistake. And that's without cooperation of the people, the victims in.
And are there significant number of violent crimes at Prescott Isle Downs Casino?
No.
Are there significant number of crimes?
Uh, these types of crimes have reduced significantly since changes were made after COVID-19, so no.
And is there any, 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 any,
You said that after the changes that were made after COVID helped reduce the number of underage individuals going into the casino. Were those changes made by your organization or by the casino?
Well, I wasn't there during COVID. Like I said, I've only been there for two and a half years. But I know when our current sergeant came in, he worked closely with casino's management. And a lot of the things we saw and heard them talk about earlier with like the signs and the placards and things like that, just being more aware and getting more involved with them and having the lines of communication open, that's kind of been where the changes have come in. We just get more involved in it more.
In addition, if I could add, prior to COVID-19, we actually allowed underage in the building to go into the buffet area from the racetrack. Currently, nobody under 21 since then. You have to be 21 to get in the casino.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
That had a big impact on that, yeah.
Thank you, Corporal.
Thank you. The Office of Enforcement Counsel's next witness is Dan Rossman from the Board's Bureau Good morning, can you please state your name and spell your last name?
Daniel Rossman, D-A-N-I-E-L-R-O-S-S-M-A-N.
And can you please introduce yourself?
My name's Dan Rossman. I work for the Pennsylvania Gaming Control Board. I'm the Casino Compliance Supervisor at Preskaile Downs.
And can you please describe your role?
I've been employed with the Gaming Control Board for 16 years, 11 years as a supervisor. Prior to that, I was a Casino Compliance Representative.
And what are your job responsibilities?
I oversee the monitoring of casino operations at Preskaile Downs and manage the online We monitor the daily operation, making sure the casino employees and departments are abiding by their internal controls and standard operating procedures, along with the PGCB regulations. We also investigate any patron complaints, suspicious activity, employee misconduct issues, which can include procedure violations and gaming licensing. We assist any patron that requests information about problem gambling and document any self-excluded patron found on the gaming floor violating their gambling ban. The Preskaile Downs PGCB office role has stayed the same. The transition from Eldorado Resorts to Churchill was seamless.
And can you please describe the level of compliance?
Our office has unfettered access to all areas with no issues.
The count room?
Yes.
And the central control computer?
Yes.
And please leave turning.
None.
Can you please? Central control computer system?
We generally work with the Department of Revenue Auditors when they perform their onsite gaming floor audits and give them any assistance needed. There's no problems.
Can you please discuss the relationship between the Bureau of Casino Compliance and the onsite Pennsylvania State Police at Preskaile Downs?
We often share information regarding casino incidents and have a good working relationship.
Can you please explain the way in which the Bureau of Casino Compliance interacts with patrons at Preskaile Downs?
Casino Compliance Representatives watch the gaming floor and often speak to patrons gambling. They assist patrons that wish to sign up for self-exclusion, investigate complaints, and answer any gaming inquiries.
And how are patron complaints handled?
Patron complaints are fully investigated by the Casino Compliance Representative by first interviewing the patron that has the grievance. Then the investigation leads to speaking to any witnesses or employees involved, then reviewing surveillance coverage or any coverage and any electronic evidence if applicable. The Casino Compliance Representative documents the investigation and submits the findings to me for review. At the conclusion of the investigation, the patrons are contacted by phone or email with the results.
Can you please describe the relationship between the Board's Bureau of Casino Compliance and Preskaile Downs staff?
The PGCB office has a cooperative and professional relationship with Preskaile Downs.
And has Preskaile Downs been cooperative in the compliance reviews conducted by the Bureau of Casino Compliance?
Yes.
As the Casino Compliance Supervisor assigned to Preskaile Downs, are you familiar with the regulatory issues which occur at the casino?
Yes, I am.
And what are the most common regulatory issues at Preskaile Downs?
The most common violations are procedure violations that normally can occur with table games and drop team employees. The violations are generally caused by employee error.
And in your opinion, are there any issues or concerns which would negatively impact Preskaile Downs suitability for continued licensure?
None.
Thank you, we have no further questions.
Hayes?
No questions, thank you.
Any questions from our board members? No, thank you.
Thank you. The Office of Enforcement Counsel's last witness is from the Bureau of Investigations Good morning, can you please state your name and spell your last name for the record?
Good morning, my name is. Also the case agent of Preskaile Downs.
Describe your employment history with the board?
I've been employed with the board for over 15 years. The first five I spent as a casino compliance. 2019.
Job duties as an investigator? Describe the scope of a typical casino investigation?
Typically speaking, it is.
And can you please give me some examples of the areas that the Bureau of Investigations and Enforcement looks at during a renewal investigation?
Compliance, credit and litigation history, criminal history, along with any non-gaming or other gaming licensure held by the applicant, including regulatory compliance. Additionally, for individuals, we complete a net worth analysis to verify every asset and liability held by the applicant.
And what tools does the Bureau of Investigations and Enforcement utilize to examine these areas?
We have several database searches that we use. They include JNet, Accurant, Pacer, and TrueView. We process AFOIA through the FBI. We conduct local police checks with police jurisdictions. Additionally, any other internet search that the investigator deems necessary. Some of those include the OFAC sanctions list, the Pennsylvania Debtorment List, and the New Jersey Prohibited Vendor Report.
And all those suitability investigations remain ongoing. At this time, is the renewal investigation into the licensee and its associated individuals and entities complete? Was PID LLC cooperative during the renewal investigation?
Yes, they were.
Did the Bureau of Investigations and Enforcement discover any areas of interest during the investigation?
No, we did not.
And in your opinion, are there any issues which would negatively impact PID LLC's suitability for continued licensure?
No.
We have no further questions.
Mr. Hayes?
No questions, thank you.
Any questions from board members? And that concludes your presentation?
That concludes our presentation and witnesses.
Thank you. So, we will move on to our public comment period. First, I will address written public comment that was received by the board clerk through either our board clerk email address or the registration online. We received four public comment, which I think in some cases overlaps with those Mr. Hayes has already presented, but we will present them again as we did receive them through those channels, and they are marked as Hearing Exhibits 1 through 4, and they are all in support of the renewal of Preskaile Downs' license. They have been provided to the parties, OEC and PID Council. So we'll now begin with the public comment portion of the hearing. As I call your name, please come forward to the microphone and on the podium, and each speaker should begin their remarks by stating and spelling their name for the court reporter. You will have about five minutes for your remarks, and if you're getting close to that, I'll let you know. If you have registered to speak today, if you could stand and raise your right hand to be sworn by the court reporter. Oh, good, that matches the number that I have, three, yay. And we'll start with Anthony Davis. He's a local government representative. Come forward to the podium.
Good morning. Anthony Davis, A-N-T-H-O-N-Y-D-A-V-I-S. I'm one of the three supervisors in Summit Township, and I just, I have a few points to make for the casino. Preskaile Downs Casino benefits the community by generating significant tax revenue for Summit Township and the neighboring townships, as well as Erie County as a whole. With the revenue, Summit Township helps to support our local fire department, allowing them to provide the proper level of emergency services to the residents and the employees of Summit. The casino donates generously $2,500 each year for the annual Summit Township Senior Picnic, which is very nice. The casino also stimulates economic growth with its employment opportunities at the casino and the other local businesses such as hotels, restaurants, convenience stores, with the tourism that it attracts. In conclusion, having Preskaile Downs Casino in Summit Township has been extremely beneficial, and we support the renewal of the casino's gaming license. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have from community groups, Al Messina from the Boys and Girls Club of Erie.
Good morning. My name is Al Messina, M-E-S-S-I-N-A. I'm the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club. Prior to coming to Erie, I should say back to Erie, I grew up here. I worked in other places, mainly New York City, Washington DC, and other places. And with that work, I had the opportunity that maybe I wouldn't otherwise have had to work with CEOs of Fortune 500 companies. I worked with NASA scientists at the Hoover Institution at Stanford. I worked with senior members of the Justice Department, including the Deputy Attorney General of the United States. The reason I reference these examples is to illustrate what a high level of professionalism looks like and what a high level of integrity looks like. And the point I want to make here is that I see these same attributes in the leadership team with Gary Hendricks and Matt Ennis, Jennifer C., Brenda Mosky, and Jake Rack. And I've seen something else in them that I think has kind of already been reported here today, and that is they have a deep dedication to the community, and particularly in my case, to kids. In fact, absent their efforts, they've raised a lot of money on our behalf, but absent those efforts, I'm not sure we would have made it through the pandemic, but we did. We're doing fine now. The club is a safe haven. It sits on the edge of perhaps the most dangerous, the most violent neighborhood in Erie County, maybe one of the most violent in the state. But kids who come to the club, they can find mentors to mentor them, they can have their talents nurtured, and they're in a safe place. It's an iconic institution in Erie, established in 1895, and thousands of young people have gone through that institution, and because of its influence have, I think, found a better life for themselves. I know this to be true because I'm one of them. So, as you think about renewing the license for Preskaile Downs and Casino, which of course I support and we support, I would simply point out the tremendous professionalism of the people involved in it, their integrity, and most important perhaps to me is their deep dedication to the kids of the Erie County community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Messina, we have a question from one of our board members, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering if you could specify how exactly the casino supports the Boys and Girls Club? Is it strictly financial?
It's financial. They participate in our major fundraiser, and they're the big dog in the group. And I don't know if I want to calculate the numbers, but it's really very significant, and it's provided a lot of, it's allowed us to keep the lights on, open the doors, pay the staff, and do the work, and change the lives of children. So it's, I mean, without them, I think we'd be hard stress to make a budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Joseph Fatt from the Warriors to Washington. Fatt, sorry if I mispronounced your last name.
It's okay, it's Joe Fatt, just like you got in a fight and you fought someone. My name is spelled J-O-E-P-F-A-D-T, and I'm the President of Warriors to Washington. We're a local nonprofit 501(c)(3) that features a mission of taking veterans to Washington, DC once a year. In fact, a week and a half ago, we were in Washington on an annual trip. Just as a role for the Preskaile Downs and how much we appreciate what they've done for our organization, they allow us to use their parking lot to park our vehicles from Friday night until we return on Sunday. For veterans who have a certain insecurity about the surroundings around them, by having that parking lot security in place is a wonderful thing for them. It helps us assure the veterans that people are caring about them and caring for them. And I think for our mission to support our local veterans, that's a hallmark of it. We want to show them support, we want to show them that people are aware of them and are caring about them and caring for them, and that's what our group is intended to do. We leave on Friday. The casino has been terrific in support. They support us with our first evening meal again, so that's a way for us to show our veterans that people in the community care about them. We go to Washington, DC, we see the sights, we tour the Capitol, we go to the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and for anybody who's ever served, and myself, I've served for 30 years, when you take your oath, you're taking it to the Constitution, and it's a moving and powerful experience to stand in front of the Constitution because that's the document that you wrote that blank check as a service member, too. We go from there, we tour all the sites that we can on the Mall, from the White House down to Washington Monument, the Lincoln Memorial, the New World War II Memorial, the Vietnam Wall. We do take Vietnam veterans with us, and it's a powerful and moving time for them as well. We go to the Iwo Jima Memorial, where our Marines can have their moment. We go to the Iwo Jima Memorial where our Marines can have their moment. And then on Sunday, the next day, we go to the Pentagon first. We have two individuals that speak to us, one who was in the Pentagon, another one who had their in-laws on American 77, and we're lost in that. So that powerful moment occurs, and again, we can't do that without sponsors and support with, without people like the casino. The most significant event that we do is we go to Arlington and we conduct a reef ling ceremony, and someone locally donates the reef. And it just has that power for the organization, for those guests that we bring, for the veterans and their guests that we bring on the trip. And again, all that is possible because we get donations from people to do this. And Prescott Downs and Casino has really stepped up to the plate for us to offer their support financially to make this trip possible so that we can do events like the Warriors to Washington trip to Washington DC. We do four events throughout the year. We're coming up on number two. On Veterans Day, we have a relationship with Prescott State Park, and we conduct a flag-raising ceremony there. From that event in May on Memorial Day week, we have a reception for all the people who have gone on the trip and the people we're going to take in the next year. And then we do a 5K on Prescott State Park in June as well. But again, I can't speak highly enough of the team from Prescott Downs and how they've supported our veterans over the course of the last, it's been at least 10 years that we've had direct support from them, and our organization's about 14 years old. And we're very local. In fact, I went through fourth and fifth grade at Summit Central across the street over there, so about as local as you can get. But I appreciate their, their support financially and their support emotionally. One of the things that we try and strive for as a small organization is that our veterans feel appreciated and appreciated by the community. So we've worked hard to do that, and with their help and support, they've made that much easier for us to do. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of the list that I have registered. Is there anyone here today who thought they registered or would like to speak? Raise your hand. Yes. Come on up. Good morning, and you are?
Good morning. My name is Gary Horton.
Okay.
I am currently wearing several hats. Gary is G-A-R-Y-H-O-R-T-O-N. I am currently the president of the local branch of the NAACP, of which I've been the president the last six years. I'm the coordinator of the Eastside Grassroots Coalition, a neighborhood revitalization group of which I've been coordinator the last eight years. We have a project to revitalize Buffalo Road, a neighborhood that half the residents are children 18 and under. A third of them are in homes headed by single-parent women, and our neighborhood has been racked with disinvestment. First, the man closed, then the drugstore, then the local elementary school, then the bakery. And what we have taken its place are smoking vape shops, skilled gangs that were spoken of here earlier, and just people who, liquor establishments, people who really don't have the best interests of the vulnerable population at heart. I also am privileged to serve on the Governor's Advisory Board for Environmental Justice. I serve as the director of the Urban Erie Community Development Corporation, of which I've been the director come January 25 years. And I'm privileged to provide educational programs and language programs and after-school programs for new American populations in particular, children from resettled families from places like Tanzania, the Congo, Rwanda, Burundi, South Sudan, Iraq, Syria, Afghanistan, and I probably forgot a few, but I have over 200 children of public schools and after-school programs at four different sites, two different Muslim mosques, one at an Apoli Center, and 100 students at a local elementary school. I am here to support the application for renewal, but I believe they can do more. I think they can do better. Some of the goals or results that I heard presented here, since this gaming has been in Erie, it could and should, it's my hope, that it presents an opportunity to impact minority populations better than they have. I appreciate the outreach that they've done to organizations. I believe they can do more for minorities. I think it can be reflected in the outreach, the results that they're trying to get in employment and participation. Erie has a large, almost one quarter of Erie's population, the city of Erie is minority. I would hope that even though these public hearings are held in the municipality where the license is, that you could have a public hearing in the city of Erie sometime over some issue to get input from where Erie's total minority or most majority minority population lives, or new American population. Erie's new, this population has been stabilized or benefited from the influx of new Americans in our community. And I didn't hear any representation or recognition of having the kind of bridge to those populations. I've been in the casino one time. Well, I'll take that back. Before COVID, I was provided a meeting within the administration during the initial renewal or initial licensing process. I was an elected school board member, where I served eight years. And we were prevented by law from attending or participating in the opening and the launch of the casino. And therefore, I never, only came back once for a surprise birthday party for someone in one of the restaurants. I have never been into the casino outside of that. And the people that are with the casino since its beginning, they can tell you, I have helped them hire people initially. I've held job fairs and things like that, that I feel have benefited them from the beginning. I believe they need a consultant, or they need input from the city. The consultants that I've seen, they've been from outside our area. Maybe they're, they're good at what they do, but it's not good enough for the impact that it does not have in the population who stake their hopes and dreams by coming to the casino trying to win. It's not reflected in the hiring or the outreach. And I just, I believe that they can do better. I'm appealing to you, maybe they need a nudge, and that, that everybody doesn't say everything is so good, and they just keep on status quo. I want to see them do better. That's my hope, and that because I recognize the impact and the opportunity that they have. So I stand here today in support of it, but awful, also hopeful and optimistic that they can appreciate my comments from a constructive standpoint and endeavor to do better for the minority population in our region. Thank you for coming, providing me the opportunity to share, and I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
It was brought to my attention that we did not swear you in before you. So do you swear or affirm that what you just told us is the truth to the best of your lungs?
So help me God.
Okay, thank you very much. Now you're official.
Any questions?
Any questions? Fran has a question, Commissioner Regan, Commissioner Dermody?
Just one question. You mentioned you had job fairs and, you know, with, with the, with the casino previously. You haven't had any, or the ability to talk to them about job fairs since then, or how long has it been since you've had one? And how successful were they when you had them?
I can't recall post-COVID any communication with the casino, not any. And I am very engaged in Erie's minority population, which is why I believe, why I can say earnestly, I think they can do better.
Have you reached out to them?
Hmm, I tried to go online and register to make comments at this hearing, and that I was looking for the opportunity. I've looked at their diversity statement, and it kind of leaves a lot to, you know, I feel like I'm in their network, they should be reaching out to me. I'm a person who has, who has proved that I could, I have helped them in the past. I would challenge any of them to say I haven't helped them in the past, and I'm willing to do that in the future because I believe they can, this opportunity, this business represents an opportunity to benefit people who look like me. Last point is, in the economic benefit to all the categories, I never heard any economic benefit to the minority community, and that I didn't hear what the impact was, any of that. And I believe that we take numbers of the people who come to the casino, and that, and I believe that the representation of minorities, even though I haven't been there, my estimate is that it's up there somewhere as a customer, and I just believe they can do better.
Great. Well, I'm sure they'll reach out after this. Thank you, thank you.
Mostly you answered the question, asked the question I was going to ask, but did you have any other specific requests of the casino? You mentioned a consultant, and you mentioned, mentioned more outreach. Is there anything else specifically?
Well, I think you would appreciate providing a forum within the community, the largest community in Erie County, the city of Erie. You could benefit from input from them, and they could come make a public comment like I have. And maybe it will benefit the company and the board. Yeah, I believe it will certainly benefit the community. Having a voice helps.
Thank you. And would you agree, though, that their efforts with the Boys and Girls Club is something that's probably benefiting the minority population in the neighborhood you're talking about?
I send students to the Boys and Girls Club. I work with the Boys and Girls Club, but I also know that I have a much larger, more diverse population and programs. I have 30 employees. I don't know how many the Boys and Girls Club has. I hired 70 kids, 14 to 18, for the summer to teach them landscaping and other kinds of skills so they would not walk around. Last year, until they got in trouble, last year I hired 100 kids. I've been able to access ARP funds from both the county and the city and from the school district to do that because I believe, as my friend Al said, that our young people are important, and we don't nearly invest enough in them. There's a lot of attention focused on the kids who go wrong, while the kids who kind of do what we provide for them stand around and look. I think more has to be done for those students, and they're very diverse. And I agree, more can be done at the Boys and Girls Club, but I also believe more can be done in the populations that I serve.
Thank you.
I have a.
Chair has a question as well.
Maybe not necessarily a question. I'm glad you came forward, Mr. Horton. I can tell you that we at the Pennsylvania Gaming Control Board have been trying to increase diversity, not only within our organization, but also within the industry. And my assistant tried to reach out to the NAACP in Erie, I think it was last year, and received no response because we wanted to set up a meeting, we, Gaming Control Board, with your organization, to specifically talk about the issues that you are raising and addressing, to try to make better inroads into the community, and to also try to make better inroads into recruiting folks from the community into the gaming industry and the Pennsylvania Gaming Control Board. So if you can provide contact information, I will personally make sure that my staff reaches out. In fact, our administrative director is sitting in the back, and she's been a part of this. We've, we've met with organizations like yours in several cities across the Commonwealth already, and it's proven to be very fruitful. So I'm just saying, we did try to reach out to you guys, and I'm glad you're here because we do want to, we work with you, and I'm sure the casino will have their own response, but we have made that effort, and we're going to continue to make that effort. So if you can make sure we have your contact information, I will guarantee somebody will be in touch with you, okay?
Happy to do that and apologize or missing the communication or.
It was something online, they, they tried to leave a message online, and just nobody ever got back to us, so that's why I'm glad you're here.
And, and I'm not here to look backwards, I'm here to look forward. I believe I can help.
Good. So, yeah, so are we. So thank you, again, thank you, I'm glad you showed up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Hayes, I seems to want to make a comment?
And first of all, we'd like to thank Mr. Horton for taking time out of his schedule to, to give his thoughtful comments here today. Unlike, on behalf of Prescott Downs, they would certainly be willing to have discussions with members of his organization to see how a relationship could be built. And just one point, I, I, I think it's important to raise that, yes, Summit Township does receive 2% of the local share, but Erie County does as well. And I think people need to understand that that money is there for economic development projects in the county that also should be used for, for initiatives that maybe Mr. Horton was discussing here today. But we will be willing to make, have, reach out to your organization.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate that and look forward to that. I am engaged with them. I bought that abandoned elementary school called Burton. It's the oldest public school building in the city of Erie. I purchased that, and the gaming people gave me $100,000 for pre-development towards the $10 million that it will take to revitalize that building and put it back in place. So I certainly recognize that, but I also recognize that they don't have a diversity plan or diversity motivation or anything like that. They don't have a commitment to be diverse, even though they try to be diverse in that. And I believe there's a commitment here to be diverse, and I believe I can help you in that commitment to do better in that. But I do appreciate your comments, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you so much. God bless you, enjoy your visit to Erie.
There anyone else that thought they registered to speak? Being no other hands today. I'll turn to Prescott Downs, do you have any closing statement?
Just briefly, Director Lloyd, Chair Smiler, Commissioner Dermody, Commissioner Regan, on behalf of PIDLC and Churchill Downs, we want to thank you for the opportunity you gave us to appear before you today. We understand that this is a process that's mandated by the Act, but it's, it's a, we appreciate your thoughtful attention to our presentation. And we also want to thank your staff under the leadership of Director O'Toole for all the hard work went into preparing today's hearing, not only in the logistics of the hearing itself, but all of the reports, the background investigations, all the other materials that had to be prepared to get us to this spot today. That includes the Office of Enforcement Counsel, the Bureau of Investigation and Enforcement, Bureau of Casino Compliance, Bureau of Licensing, Office of Communications, and of course, Office of Hearings and Appeals. We also want to thank Corporal Canar and the Pennsylvania State Police for their participation in today's hearing. We are glad to hear that they share our sentiments, that there is a positive working relationship at the property between the casino, the regulator, and law enforcement. Lastly, we want to thank the representatives from Summit Township, Mr. Davis, for taking time out of your busy schedule to appear in support of our application, as well as the representatives from the nonprofit organizations, Al Messina and Joe Fight, Fott, for appearing today. And lastly, I want to also acknowledge the distinguished members of the General Assembly who offered letters of support of this renewal application, Senator Loughlin and Representatives Bizarro and Mersky, who also are not here today, but offered their strong support of this renewal application. So again, thank you for your time and consideration today.
Thank you. Mr. Tepper, any closing statement?
The Office of Enforcement Counsel has no closing statement, but would like to thank the Office of Hearings and Appeals and the board for their time this morning.
So the record will remain open until the board hears the matter at a later public board meeting. I will prepare a report based on the testimony and evidence gathered today, and that report will be sent to the board along with the transcript and all of the exhibits entered into the record today, as well as the application materials. And the board, at its convenience, will schedule this matter to be heard at a future public board meeting. I would also like to thank the staff here at Summit Township, especially Lisa, who helped me schedule this hearing today and have hosted us in their building today. Thank you for that, and thank you all for coming and for your cooperation. And the hearing is now concluded and adjourned. hearing is now concluded and adjourned.